All right, I have six o'clock before we go ahead and begin this meeting tonight. Good evening, thank you all for joining us, especially on a beautiful sunny evening that could be somewhere else, so thank you for being here with us. So, we are going to begin tonight with our pledge of allegiance, if you'll please join us. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, just a couple of quick reminders, there were agendas in the foyer there, if you wanted to grab one, you'll see we have a very full agenda tonight, it's also up on the screen, so appreciate everyone following our Robert's Rules of Order, I'll yield time on the floor to keep us on our agenda, so appreciate everyone keeping us on track to that agenda and not staying here all night together, so. First up on our agenda items is tonight's consent agenda, we have a motion to approve our consent agenda. We have a second? All right, I have a motion by trustee Brazil, seconded by trustee Hernandez de Caro. Roll call vote, trustee Brazil.
No, any discussion, please.
Would you like to discuss the motion to approve?
Yes, I would, there was a change in wording, on, I was the secretary during the meeting, referred to in letter F, my wording is word-for-word exact on the second motion, but on the first motion, there has been a change from regarding the removal to do to, from to do one-time counsel to remove library, to regarding the removal of the library, those two very different meanings, I object to my wording, which I wrote down exactly, I have my minutes here, I read them out to you, you voted on it according to the wording I submitted for the secretary's as of that meeting, and I object to that very much, my vote would have been different had you not, if you had changed that wording, I would not have voted for that, I voted for counsel, to counsel us regarding this move, not to just solely focus on removal.
So, this is on the February 3rd?
Correct.
Correct.
We're at Janice's.
Right here.
Okay, okay, I see.
Tori, do you have a point of clarity?
I think the one I included was Janice's, because there was a question about that before the meeting, is that right, Echo?
Yeah, we had a question about it via email, and I do not, I know we didn't deliberate via email, so I know there was no discussion.
Yeah, because any deliberation would have had to be here, so, I did include yours.
Okay.
That's what I read, is to hire legal counsel for one-time consultation.
And then it says regarding the removal, mine says to do one-time counsel to remove library, those are two different meanings, getting consultation about removing the library, or just specifically to solely remove the library, those are very different meanings. And as I said, my second motion was presented word-for-board exactly as I wrote it and read it to you, so I object to this one, the wording being changed.
So, would you like to make a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the table to pull this out for revision?
I would move that we revise it.
So, John, would you accept a friendly amendment to revise this as a part of our approval of the consent agenda?
So, I guess, I think we should have a discussion, so what does that do to change the scope and impact?
The wording regarding the removal is specifically instructing the council to focus on the removal of the library, to hire counsel to do a one-time consult to remove the library is a consultation asking information and advice about that move.
And that is the version that's in here?
To me, semantically, there is a great difference in meaning, and I object that my words were changed from what I wrote and presented as my minutes from that closed session.
I don't, I don't think we changed it, this is what, this is what you submitted, right, I know, but, yeah.
It's different meanings, different semantics.
I don't think we voted on counsel, we voted on the original, what's that?
We discussed a lot of variations, but the word-to-word was John moved to hire counsel to do one-time counsel to remove library as a plaintiff, period, those words.
So, Janice, in the ones in the packet, it does say one-time consultation, it doesn't say consult, it says consultation regarding the removal of the libraries.
Regarding the removal of the library?
Yep.
Is that the same meaning, is that the same focus, when you're just focusing it on removing the library versus a consultation about removing the library, I'm worried about the semantics, because if it was just to remove the library from the suit, I would change my vote to nay on that motion, and if that's how this needs to result, I would make that change with this wording, and change my vote to nay on that motion, if that would simplify matters.
So, I think the good news is these items are on tonight's agenda for a new vote, so, so that we're all aware, again, we have a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda with a second, so, Janice, if you'd like to propose a friendly amendment to that motion, we can do that if there's no other discussion.
My amendment would be adding to John's motion, Diana's motion, John's motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
That trustee Hagan would change her vote to nay, if the wording is not to be changed.
I think since we're going to talk about it and vote on it again, I don't have a problem with making the amendment.
Okay, then I would like to change regarding the removal, those words, to as awkwardly sound, to do a one-time, to hire legal counsel for a one-time consultation to remove the library, not regarding the removal, but to remove the library as a plaintiff.
Do we need to vote on that correction?
Um, no, just to clarify, she can't change the vote she made in the closed meeting, she could vote no to approve these minutes, but if you guys are okay changing regarding the to, none of that is Echo's language that she suggested.
I don't know whose language it was, but the consultation is to remove.
To remove, okay.
Not regarding the removal.
So, it would read just-
I don't know if it semantically makes a huge difference, but in my head it does, my other motion, how it was written, was followed word-for-word, this was not.
Okay, let me read one time, just to make sure that everybody agrees with this change, because we can change the wording of how we talk about what's happening in the minutes, and if it was substantive, like Echo had said in the email, then we would have had to talk about that now, which we are, so it says, and excuse my voice, John Garrity moved to hire legal counsel for a one-time consultation to remove, so the change is to remove the library as a plaintiff from the suit.
Thank you, it, like I said, legally, it may not make a difference, but since those are the words I wrote down that night, I would like those to-
And that doesn't change any of your substantive agreement with that?
No.
Okay, I mean, everyone else agrees that that's what you thought you voted for.
So, Diana, I'm sorry, do you accept that as a friendly amendment to the proposal to approve the consent agenda with that revision?
Thank you, guys.
Mary, you still second that?
Yes.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
Thanks, guys, thank you, like I said, don't know if it makes a big difference semantically, but in my head it does.
No, that's important. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda with the friendly amendment as discussed, to revise that language, I will go to now roll call vote, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is the administrative highlights for the 2024 annual report, so Dana, you know how for that.
So, this is our annual report, it includes statistics that were required to report to the state library every year, it's been made available on our social media page, and we have it available, I believe it's on the circulation desk, but I'm not positive about that, it has, you know, how many checkouts we had, how many visits we had this past year, it was quite a record-breaking year for us, because there was the increase in library visits, event attendance, circulation, and new library cards created, so, it's quite a lovely report that our communications team put together, I recommend just checking it out in its entirety, but it has like how many, our collection breakdown, you know, our drop-off locations, and some pictures of some of the events that we hosted this year, which are lovely.
And if you didn't notice, I put a fancy copy for the trustees up there, and the public can get those at the front desk, sorry, the packet has it printed.
That was all for me to report on.
Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda then takes us into our public comment period, so according to our current bylaws, we do have a 60-minute period allotted for that, three-minute increments, so those who signed up in order, we will, I'll go ahead and call the names so that you know you're up to speak, as well as I will happily call the name of the next person, so that you can be prepared to speak, I do want to take a moment right now, if you have handouts that you'd like to bring to the board, let's maybe do that all together at once, and if you have your name on your handout, that would be even more helpful for us with 14 speakers, to make sure we have the right handout to the right person, if you'd like to do it after, I'd like to just not spend too much time on that, so if you have handouts and you'd like to bring those now, not, we will, I think it's all right.
That's all right, thank you very much.
All right, so thank you, everyone, for participating, 13 speakers is great, appreciate it.
I make a motion, we turn the heat on.
And Echo, I don't think we'll get to it, but I'll start at an hour o'clock, when you call the first question, or when they start speaking, I guess.
All right, the first person that we have signed up to speak in order of which you signed up is Lucas Underwood, after Mr. Underwood, we've got Danny Garcia, I apologize by mispronunciation, so Lucas, you're up first.
Good evening, members of board, I wanted to start my public comment today with a thanks to the library staff who have been present in these tumultuous last couple of years, you have all faced harassment, accusations of grooming, and many other attacks that you nor any other public servant deserve to face, despite all of this, the staff I've met in Christian County are always unfriendly, quick, and efficient, you are all a credit to your profession and are a shining example of what librarians should be, compassionate, insightful, intelligent, and above all else, kind, I speak with many Springfield librarians as my volunteer time takes me to many public meetings, they whisper among each other a worry of hardship that the attacks the library staff here withstood or soon be faced in Creighton County as well, I made the trip down here to speak apiece on my thoughts for the future of this library system and its sister in the schools, and the long-term results that await the proposed changes here, I grew up in Oregon County, often cited as the poorest county in Missouri, its schools are underfunded, the library system long neglected, it's also highly conservative and Christian in its cultural makeup, the school and library boards were quite adamant about censorship of literature containing nudity, sexual content, and LGBTQ themes, by the request of local churches, our school's sex education classes were reduced to a 45-minute video covering the basics of puberty, topics of consent, contraception, pregnancy, or STDs were most mentioned and not further expanded upon, the censorship was not something I thought of as strange until later in life, I would think of friends I've made classes ahead of mine with and wondered why they were so quick to get out of the area as soon as they graduated, most would just say they were moving to one of the cities around the country to see what's out there, I thought it was sad that seven students I knew had to drop out of high school due to teenage pregnancy, but I didn't think our 7% rate was that out of the ordinary, as someone who grew up Southern Baptist, I was shocked and horrified to learn of multiple classmates who had stories of rape and sexual assault at a young age by family members and sometimes church congregants, most of whom were never charged for their crime, if I had, I had a hard time reconciling what kind of town I was growing up in, not until I became further informed and did I learn those friends who moved away were mostly trying to find a place where they would find acceptance of their LGBTQ identity, I didn't realize that our teen pregnancy rate was over five times the national average, and quite worst of all, there were other family members who would know of a relative's violation of their most vulnerable but kept quiet because of a culture of shame surrounding a girl's perceived purity being broken as more power, as more important than justice being done, I tell you these anecdotes of my home because I feel compelled to warn you all that because of these choices to censor books at the library, you have set your community on the path to foster the same results, while poverty can be attributed to the goings-on in Oregon County, I ask you-
I'm sorry, your time's up, thank you. Danny, you're next up, trustee, after Danny, Elizabeth, do dash, please.
A different timer.
Loud sounds?
Just a sec, just a second, let me see if I can find one.
We'll have to do an interpretive dance at the end of the time.
It didn't wanna, yeah, it didn't wanna-
We could just get a little bell, do we have a bell at the front desk?
Yeah.
We'll try, and if I have to, I'll very politely try to tell you that time is up, usually there's a little bell, okay, whenever you're ready, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Dave Garcia, I'm here representing the Right to Read Coalition, this is a statewide coalition that includes 1,100 individuals and 90 organizations from across Missouri, the organizations in our coalition represent over 50,000 Missourians, we support public libraries and their mission to serve all Missouri residents, libraries were established in the 1700s at the very beginning of our nation's founding, Benjamin Franklin himself was an early supporter saying libraries fill a crucial role in fostering democracy, we are aware that this library board of trustees has discussed labeling LGBTQ plus books in the district's library branches, as an organizer for promo, Missouri's LGBTQ plus policy and advocacy organization, I know all too well how harmful labeling books is, labeling books that include LGBTQ plus things is not about informing parents or providing guidance, it is about separating, stigmatizing, and sending a message that these stories and the people they represent are different in a way that requires warning, for many youth, buying a book that reflects their experiences can be life-changing, it can be the difference between feeling seen and feeling invisible, but when those books are labeled and it doesn't make, when these books are labeled, it doesn't make them harder to find, it makes students think twice before picking them up, it forces them to wonder who is watching, who might judge them, and whether reading a book can make them a target, this is not a neutral action, is it a direct barrier to access, beyond the harm to young people, this kind of labeling puts a target on librarians and educators who simply want to provide materials that meet the needs of all Christian County residents, it opens the door for censorship, challenges, and restrictions that go far beyond labeling a book, we've seen this happen in other places, where so-called neutral policies are used to justify removing books entirely, libraries are a place for learning, exploration, and personal growth, they should not be a place where young people feel shame for seeking that information, or stories that help them understand themselves in the world around them, labeling books based on identities that's not protect anyone, it only creates fear and exclusion, so on behalf of the faith and community leaders, and the 1,100 Missourians who are members of the Right to Read Coalition, I urge you to reject the labeling of books in the library collection, we are grateful for the important role you as trustees fill in serving everyone in Christian County, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Elizabeth, you're up now, and Juanita, you're up next.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to come and speak, it's been a few months since I have had the chance to come and speak, because I've been busy with other things, first thing I teach when I teach my college classes is that words matter, and the second thing that I teach is that every communication act is rhetorical and a risk, whenever people stand up to speak, they are taking a risk, that risk is that they're willing to put forward their ideas, no matter how different they are, no matter whether they're going to be accepted or not, they're taking that risk, one of the places where we get the courage to take risks is from books, this board, since its reconstitution last year, has demonstrated clearly that it doesn't understand even how parliamentary procedure works, let alone how an entire library system tied into a state and academic library system, tied into a national library organization, works. It is important for us to allow our citizens in Christian County to have access to all of the information possible, all of the opportunities possible, all of the reading that they Since coming back here to the focus of libraries and public education in the past month, I have watched what looks like random appointments, a reconstitution of the board, a calling of the catalog the library would offer for the public who pays for this, and I remember at the last board meeting I attended, which was sometime last year, someone talking about taking time to look into book labeling, Danny has spoken to that point, so I won't go further, but for me, I am astonished that the shared values I thought we had in this country, the values my son will be deployed to fight for on March 15th, aren't actually shared at all, I encourage you to please go and reread the First Amendment, to read the statements about academic and intellectual and artistic freedom, to read about empathy for people who are different from us, but still take the risk to just simply be themselves when they speak, that is all, the First Amendment, take a look at it, and then decide, before, right now, it feels like everybody has already made their decision, let's look into book labeling, not, let's discuss it, let's look into it, this is what everybody wants, I don't know where those values come from, but they sure as heck don't come from where I grew up.
Thank you. Juanita, you're up, and Cindy Mueller, you are next.
Sweeping change has come to America, change which I firmly believe has been brought about by years of both the steady drip, drip, drip of cultural poison that has been gradually and purposely injected into our culture, and even more so by the very recent discovery that this indoctrinational attack on our society has been secretly funded and paid for by our own tax dollars, we have literally been funding our own cultural demise, a newly awakened American people are stoned, we can't unsee what we have seen, for instance, one of the agencies which is being used for tax dollars and fund leftist ideologies is the USAID, created by executive order during the Kennedy administration 50 years ago, USAID was meant to create goodwill between countries, and to be a home base to distribute humanitarian aid, Doge found these outrageous expenditures on their books, a $15 million transgender bathroom in Samaria, $32,000 for a comic book in Peru to enlighten students about transgenderism, $70,000 for a transgender musical in Ireland, $47,000 for a transgender opera in Colombia, are you starting to see a pattern here, millions of dollars on sex changes in Guatemala, millions of dollars on DEI training in Serbia, so are you wondering where I'm going with this, well, for about the last two and a half years, we have watched our tax dollars in Christian County being used to purchase and push children's literature for the very same secular progressive indoctrination that has been going on worldwide in the USAID, I'm telling you, whether they even realize it or not, secular progressivism is the last hill to die on, it's their religion, and as in USAID, over the last couple of months, further scrutiny has brought something else very troubling to light, on further examination of the financial records of the Christian County Library, it has been discovered that the library's bond debt has been deferred repeatedly, kicking the can down the road to worry about later, now that wouldn't have been a problem if the former executive director had the forethought to reserve a cushion of money over those years, making sure that there was a reserve to make the bond payment when it was time, but that apparently didn't happen, at one of the last meetings, the board and the public were informed that the money, year upon year, had all been spent, first of all, I think that you all need to not worry so much about your new executive director having an MA in library science and years of experience, you obviously need a business manager who has the ability to manage $4 million of tax funds, and as a 40-plus-year private business owner who's never had the luxury of receiving tax dollars to fund anything, I have the same advice to give to library staff that I would also give to the howling politicians in our country who are complaining about the cuts, it's time to stiffen up your lower lip, resign yourself to cutting the pork, and get back on track, time to pay the piper, you will be amazed at what you can do without in order to balance the budget.
Cindy, you're up, and Mike Miller, you are next.
Good evening, my name is Cindy Mueller, and I was here as a representative of the League of Women Voters of Christian, Green, and Webster Counties, the mission of the League of Women Voters is to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in our democracy, notice the word informed, our organizations, organizations sees public libraries as a vital source for free, trusted, and unrestricted information, we support libraries as a basic community service essential to a democracy, public libraries, often guided by the high standards of the American Library Association, have a long history of cultivating strong civic communities, libraries offer public spaces for citizens to access trusted information, because the League promotes access to information, we are concerned with proposed changes to the interlibrary loan system, when the board proposes such a major change, it should consider whether it is in the best interest of its patrons to cut off access to scholarly resources contained in academic libraries, including theological and seminary schools, the proposed change will allow patrons to borrow books from the Glenstone County Library, but it will no longer permit loans from the larger Springfield-Green County System, Jury University, or the Missouri University of Science and Technology, to be an informed citizen requires access to information, exiting the current system would sever access to a wide range of resources currently available to Christian County patrons, the First Amendment guarantees freedom of speech, and therefore the freedom to read, each person can determine for themselves which resources are best for their needs, and each person need not limit access for other community members who have different needs, this access is critical to ensuring all Americans can engage in the democratic process, this is why the League is a proud member of the Right to Read Coalition of Missouri, libraries and Leagues are two of the few lasting nonpartisan civic entities who have the community ties and the trust to encourage civic dialogue, and they have a long history of working together to inform and empower voters, that work and that collaboration is today more important than ever, we hope that this board makes decisions regarding professional affiliations, book labeling, and interlibrary loan options that will keep the public library an inclusive entity that promotes knowledge, learning, and community for all of its patrons, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Miller, you're up to speak now, and Dave Royce, you're up next.
Good evening, board members, the world has many everyday heroes, some are well-known, others live in anonymity, Rosa Parks stood up for what was right by sitting down, and it was pivotal to the civil rights movement, Candace Lightner founded Mothers Against Drunk Driving, through which countless lives have been saved, tonight I introduce you to Abel Abbott, a Unitarian minister in New Hampshire from 1827 to 1849, in 1965, the New Hampshire State Legislature passed a resolution recognizing Abbott's role in 1833, when he guided work which founded the first free public library in the world, supported by taxation, Tiffany Amber Stockton wrote about Abbott on her blog in 2018, and she said that Abbott's work was important because it showed that the public library, like the public school, was deserving of maintenance by public taxation, and should be owned and managed by the people of the community, and thereby cease to be dependent upon private generosity, Stockton added that during- Stockton added that during the 1930s, society embraced a number of moral causes, including the temperance movement, educational reform, prison reform, and the humane treatment of the mentally ill. Embedded in these causes was the belief that moral perfection could be influenced by one's environment by exposure to good thoughts, music, and books. The timing was perfect for Dr. Abbott's innovative thoughts on books and education. I'm here tonight to commend your work and efforts which live up to the standards and ideals established by Abel Abbott and his colleagues. Namely, library ownership and management by the people of the community, guiding work toward exposure through good thoughts, music, and books. You are right on target, and I'm thankful for your efforts in three areas. First, changing the library board from a group of unengaged, well-meaning citizens controlled by library staff members to people responding to public concern. Second, working to prevent children seeing and being corrupted by sexually explicit materials that hurt and damage their souls. And third, raising community awareness and demanding accountability to library processes and fiscal management. Your job is tough. You are fighting current and past leadership who put special interests ahead of local community interests. And they are using a variety of tactics to defend you and bring you down. Well, stand firm. Right movements win over time. Rosa Parks, Candace Lightner, and Abel Abbott proved that, and so will you.
David Rice, you are up, and after that is Kevin Bright.
Good evening, board members. I'm David Rice, and I'm here to address concerns about transparency and the handling of Sunshine Law requests by library administration. On January 31st, I submitted a straightforward request to the board with Stifel Nicolaus, representatives referenced by Mary Miller, in January board meeting regarding a 700,000 bond delay. After several exchanges about spelling corrections and disputed costs, I received a response on February 20th, but only for meetings from 2018 to 2022, conveniently excluding the most relevant period that I've explained, Mrs. Miller's January 2025 statements about the bond delay. For this incomplete information, I was charged $27.50 for what was claimed as two hours of staff time. The Missouri Sunshine Law is clear that fees should be reasonable and that public bodies can waive fees when it serves the public interest. A simple calendar search should take minutes, not hours. On January 21st, I submitted a new, more detailed request for targeting the missing information. While Ms. Roberts acknowledged receipt within the required three business days, I received no substantive update on timing or cost estimates for fulfillment. This pattern suggests an institutional reluctance to provide complete and timely access to public records concerning library financial decisions that affect taxpayers. The law exists to ensure government transparency, not as a mechanism to deter citizens from accessing information through excessive fees or delays. I respectfully ask this board to: One, direct staff to fulfill my February 21st request promptly to waive unreasonable fees. Two, review Sunshine Law compliance procedures to ensure future requests are handled efficiently. Three, establish clear guidelines for fee waivers when requests serve the public interest. The people of Christian County deserve to know how decisions affecting their tax dollars are being made, especially regarding a $700,000 annual bond obligation. Additionally, tonight, I'm submitting a new Sunshine Law request for all Sunshine Record requests made to the board or library within the last three months, including the costs associated with each request. This information will help establish whether there's a pattern in how these requests are handled, and if I'm being charged differently than other requesters made or receiving records for free or at lower cost. Thank you for your attention in this matter.
Kevin, you're up, and after that, Sheri Michaels.
It's not a secret to anyone that knows me that I don't do social media. I don't troll people. I don't follow X or Instagram. If I have something to say, I prefer to talk to them in person. People that I don't agree with deserve respect. And to me, part of that respect includes speaking to them face to face. That lessens the potential for misunderstandings. When there's a keyboard and a monitor between two people, it becomes very difficult to get and have any civil discourse. Online, people seem to forget they are speaking to and about a person. They begin to become obsessed, out of control, and angry. Some become filled with a false courage and a sense of false power. For some unnatural reason, they begin to sift through people's background information and financial records to find any scrap of fake controversy to try to discredit them. A few days ago, a blogger began doxing three of our trustees by dragging out all kinds of pointless, old, lame information that has nothing to do with volunteering their time, experience, and skills to help our community. The bottom line is we can all point to periods in our lives such as a medical catastrophe or economic downturn that's caused even the best managers of mine to have to pay their losses, recalibrate, and move forward with their lives. Learning as we go. That happened to my wife and I when we were young, and our son was born prematurely. He nearly died. He was in pretty frail shape, and eventually we were forced into medical bankruptcy. But we went on to recover, and with forty-plus years of successful business history, what's particularly repulsive about that blog I was talking about is the fact that after digging like a dumpster dive and raccoon into other people's misfortunes, this anonymous blogger didn't even have the courage to reveal their identity. Turns out that one of the library's upper-level employees agreed with this unidentified blogger on Facebook, commented about the article, and even shared it. That's really disappointing. And that circumstance really has to be addressed. We can't live in an environment like that. We can't be positive. Bottom line, it's sad. That's unnecessary, and it's a new low in this two-and-a-half-year-old battle where nothing more than citizens requesting that perverse and age-inappropriate books in the children's section of the library be curated and organized. Keep them out of the hands of our unsuspecting children. Period. That's it. No one is asking to ban those books. No one's suggesting that adults who want them for their children can't have them. I'm just amazed that all these lies and shrill accusations from the enemies of our trustees are over the placement of kids' books. Unbelievable. And I guess I'll leave you with this one observation that's crystal clear to me. This is a perverse agenda, seems to be some kind of religion. And all this hatefulness shows me this. These people are desperate, and this ridiculous mudslinging is all they have left.
Sheri, you're up, and John Pettigrew is up next.
Well, I spoke before you, ladies and gentlemen, before, and thank you for allowing me to do it again. And my reason for speaking tonight is just to tell you thank you for keeping things calm and your heads on your shoulders and not coming unglued about certain things. Because a hostile environment is not a good environment for anyone. I work in an environment that becomes hostile very easily. People have a tendency to get angry, and the only thing they know to do is to lash back when they don't get things done their way. And I know your job is a very serious job, and you take it so that you can support our community and our family, and like you said, our children. Our children come first, and we need to make sure that these children are protected, they're covered. That is our jobs, and we look to you as board members to do so. And you know, I know you're doing this on a non-paid budget. And I don't think anybody out here understands this takes time away from your family and from your children and anyone else that's in your life. And if anybody wants to step up and try to do these jobs, you know, step forward, say something, do it. I have done this my whole entire life. I have done nothing but serve the public for 46 years as a nurse. And it's not easy. I have had low pay. I've volunteered. I've done things that is not easy. But when it comes to our children, we all need to step up and put a line between what is necessary, and that is protecting our children, no matter the cost. And these people on our board are doing that, and we need to thank you. We need to praise the things that you've done. We like all the things that you're doing at this time. We don't have time to argue over petty things. We don't have time for the hostile moments. Thank you for your courage, that you've stepped up to do the job that you've done. It's morally right. Our children are morally right. There is a difference between bullying and doing the right thing, and it's got to stop someplace. So again, thank you for taking care of our kids.
Don Pettigrew is up, and then Tamara Belling.
My name is Don Pettigrew, and I want to tell you there's optimism in my heart. So much good is happening, and I thank Almighty God for it. Positive norms like age-appropriate books for children and parental rights again recognized over medical practitioners who are willing to surgically alter adolescents. Adolescents who, by the way, because of their youth and inexperience, are unsure of themselves as their bodies mature. Reality is being exposed, and lies and false and unsustainable ideas are falling beside the curve. I thank you, library board members, for all the time and energy you have given and are giving to promote sanity to our community's behavior and goals. It has never made sense to me that we should not protect children during their formulative years. Children deserve our care, our protection. The children of today will, in a very short time, become the new generation in power. We best ground them in truth and common sense and God's law. Children naturally are blessed with an age of childhood innocence. It is a solid civilization with its society based upon bedrock sound ideas that will protect its children. Thank you, library board members, for once again moving us in that direction.
Tamara Belling, you're up, and Reggie Vindham is next.
I didn't have time to prepare anything to say, but one of the other speakers brought up the blog. And so, as much as it was trying to be dismissed or discounted, there's definitely some information on there that was alarming to me, as well as some other things that I had heard about through the grapevine, aside from reading some of this just today. So I'd like to bring up a couple of those items. Okay. So, one of them, and I'm not even familiar with all the board members. I hope they'll see. See everybody's names. Okay. So, you know, this isn't all just for good, the way somebody said a little while ago. There's a lot more in the plans, just like our national politics. There's a lot more that will be revealed and things that will be unraveled as we move forward. One of the quotes in this blog from a rally where trustee Schneider spoke was part of, one of the quotes that's part of this blog was, "What I've seen in the background is it's already a lot of, it's already wasting a lot of time, and our library is now, our library, and our life, and our library is now, our library executive director is now not able to manage our library. She's now managing paperwork. That's now what we're spending our tax dollars on." And why is that? That she's just managing paperwork now? It's because of all the things that the board is requesting. We're going to start challenging one at a time. We're already, okay, it's already seen up. Seeing it wasting so much time of the executive director, and she's no longer focused on managing the libraries well. She's now focused on reading the challenges and responding to the challenges. My mouth actually dropped open when I heard trustee John say something to the acting interim director at one of the meetings on YouTube that I saw. And I've just watched, I've tried to catch up the last few months in the last, just in the last, like, last night and this morning. So it's all a little bit confusing to me still because I haven't been to one of these meetings since sometime last year. But you said to her, you answered to us, and then the rest of it, something along the lines of, I didn't write down the quote, but something along the lines of, "And you don't need to worry about all of that other library work or stuff that you're talking about, that you don't have the time to look through the whole budget from last year and tell us where corners can be cut." And that, not letting somebody do their job because she
Reggie Vindham is up, and Sheila Michaels is next.
First of all, I'd like to say, thank you, Mary. Thank you for volunteering, and it's good to see you sitting there. Each one of you. I sat up last night about midnight. Last three board meetings I missed, so I got caught up on them. You put in a lot of time and a lot of effort, and I just want to say thank you for that. Little bit, I know, two and a half years ago, that first meeting that we attended at Sparta, that we were going to face the things that we did. I told those five board members over the last two years, I told them at least two times, maybe three, I said, "We want to work with you." But I said, "We're going to save the lives of our children and our families. If you don't want to work with us, we're going to find somebody that will." And we've replaced four now on this board. And I just want to remind you of why you're here. You know, two or three months ago, America spoke. They were fed up with this nonsense that's going on in the United States of America. Men being in women's sports, sharing the same bathrooms together. Board members in school having more authority over the children than what their parents. We've had it. We're not putting up with it anymore. America spoke. Trump won the popular vote. He took all seven of the swing states. He's been signing executive orders right and left. I want to encourage you, board, get to signing those executive orders right and left. You're going to have all kinds of opposition, but that's all right. That's what you're here for. You're born into the kingdom of God for a time such as this. And if those board members have worked with us, we're not going to let. What's going on in the federal level is going on in the state level. It's going on in the counties. It's going on everywhere in the United States of America. We're not fighting this battle by ourselves. But these books that destroy lives, they're straight out of the pits of hell. Satan is the author, and whoever he can get that'll yield their mind or hand to write it, he'll use them. And I want to remind those people, the day's coming. You're going to die, and you're going to stand before God in judgment. And you got one answer. That's Jesus Christ. And you can turn to him. He can forgive you, and he can give you, he can give you a brand-new life. In the book of Revelation, chapter two, Jesus talked about the servant Jezebel, who called herself a prophetess. She wasn't one. She is no more a prophetess than I'm an astronaut. But he said, "She seduced my servants." God said, "I gave her space to repent." Read it, Revelation, chapter two. God gives people space to repent, and we need to listen to him.
Michael is up. We're not going to public comment unless you've signed up to speak tonight. So Sheila Michaels is up. Cindy Dickens is our last speaker.
Good evening. I, like several people in the room, was concerned about the discussion of the new director role and the removal of the requirement for a master's in librarianship. I think a lot of us are concerned. I think we're all concerned about different things. However, I was really, really encouraged to know that there have been several applicants who do have a master's in librarianship. And so I think that should be very encouraging to you as a board of trustees, that you will have this pool of candidates to pull from that do have that master's in librarianship, and I think that's amazing. So that shows that there are a lot of qualified candidates, not only in the community, but who are willing to step up and take the role. So I'm very encouraged. but who are willing to step up and take the role. So I'm very encouraged by that. The other thing I wanted to talk about as well, there's been a lot of discussion in meetings about the ALA. Everything from the freedom-to-read statement to some of the leadership. And I noticed today on the agenda, under new business, removal of memberships in ALA and MLA as appropriate. That seems kind of vague to me, so I'm not really certain about what all of that will entail. So I'm sure you, as a board, will discuss that further. But I want to point out that the freedom-to-read statement that has been often criticized at these meetings was originally written in 1953, and it was written with the understanding that, of course, parents direct their children's reading. Of course, the parents are in charge of their own home. And that freedom-to-read statement, and we, as librarians, and how we enforce it, we do that with the understanding that, of course, parents are in charge of their own households and their children. So I just wanted to maybe offer that to make you feel a little better, that all the ALA committee work that I've done, which has been a lot. I just stepped off of a national committee. I was an ALA emerging leader. I've been a member for years. I've been, to quote Hamilton, "in the room where it happens." I have never heard this freedom-to-read statement interpreted in such a way that we do not want parents involved in their children's reading. So I don't know where that's coming from, but if I could just put your mind at ease, I could tell you that. And I would be happy to answer any questions. As an active member of the ALA, I can tell you what happens at the national conventions. I was just there in January. I'll be there in June. I can tell you my interactions with the president. The current president is a woman from Kansas City. She's a Midwesterner. She's a Missouri gal, like a lot of us, and you will be very pleased to know she has an MBA. And I know this has been important to some of you, to have somebody with business experience. So I left my business card with you, because I would love to, if you would like, to reach out to someone who actually has done work in the NLA, in the ALA, and is a member of the ALA, and has been in these meetings and experienced these things. If you want to talk with someone firsthand, give me a call.
Amen.
Thank you. Cindy Dickens, you are up.
Give you a second to get to the next slide. I'm sorry, I forgot to put my name on. All right, good evening. I want to go ahead and just jump right into what I have to say. First, I would like to congratulate and welcome Mary to the board. You could have not picked a crazier time to take on this role. And at the same time, your willingness to serve as needed, and what you are doing is of the utmost importance. So thank you, my friend, for serving the community. Second, I would like to thank all the board of trustees for the time and work you've put in as of late, from finding a new executive director to fixing the financial problems that were left to you as a giant surprise that I'm sure you did not want, to the question of labeling books to keep inappropriate material out of the hands and away from the eyes of our children. Lastly, the handoffs you have in front of you are in regards to Brandon Jason. One is of a post on Facebook supporting the newest blog to pop up called "We Are Concerned." This is a blog with an anonymous author, also known as "A Coward Who Hides Behind Their Keyboard, Spreading Lies About the Issues, the People on the Board." It is nothing more than hit piece after hit piece. It is filled with hateful vitriol, information that lacks context, and written by and pushed by those on the left. The second is a post that Brandon made on Reddit. I have highlighted for you the names he has called the people in this community that he serves as branch manager of the library. He has called us and some of the board members things such as aggressive, hostile, radicals that need to be exposed and confronted, and fascist. He has reposted the "We Are Concerned" that has called the board of trustee members, and I quote, "individuals with criminal intent." Brandon, I find your words, I know you're not here, I find your words and your behavior not only towards the community that you claim to serve, but also the board in which you work alongside of me disgusting, reprehensible, and out of line. Every other place of business would have fired you for your public comments.
Yes.
You say in your post, you don't care if these people, I'm assuming you mean us, target you and call you names, but Brandon, you were the only one targeting and calling names. You also say in that same Reddit post that you want to be aligned with your library's efforts. Tell me, Brandon, how does that align with the library's efforts? Your efforts are creating divisiveness, painting others in an unfavorable light because you disagree, because you've had your feelings hurt. It is at this time that I am not asking for an apology from you. I am asking for your resignation effective immediately. As you clearly do not serve the community, you insult the very people who patron this library and sit on this board. I will leave you with this. Everything in this world comes down to a fight between good and evil. We must get up every day as Christians and put on the full armor of God. And remember that if God is for us, who can be against us? Echo, Mary, John, Diana, know that the community of believers is keeping you in their prayers, and God is on your side. We are proud to stand and fight with you.
Amen.
All right, thank you, everyone. That concludes tonight's public comment period within the hour. Well done. I take a formal intermission.
I'm trying to adjust the temperature. I turned on my air conditioner. Lots of people make heat. Appreciate it.
I thought people were saying they were cold.
First it was cold and then hot, but I think, I think Echo said she was hot. I don't know how people are back there.
I don't want to brag.
It's less cold, I believe.
Across the bear.
Do we have any paperwork for the resource sharing update?
I just have a statement.
Okay, we can make sure. We can take a quick intermission, everyone. Thank you for your patience and understanding. We have a lot to do, so. Yeah, Tori, if you don't mind if you have a minute. Thank you for reminding us.
There's also printed copies, and the best of you will if you'd like a printed copy. There should be. If you're out, let me know. Okay, great.
Echo, I forgot to give you this. Is that okay? Power suggestion.
Yeah, it can't hurt.
Wait, we love that you started us on a, yes, really great. Thank you. No, no, I have a very long agenda, so. I thought it would get me at something, so I'm here. It's going up and down. I think it was cold, and it turns up, and then it gets too hot.
I've been trying.
It's a little bipolar.
Are you getting, well, I actually turned on the air to try to get it, because it was up to 76 in here, which is getting kind of, that's warm for this room.
All right. Back in a minute. Thank you all for your patience. All right, we will begin the agenda as on the screen. Old business. We have two, three items of old business, starting with the resource sharing software update. So Dana, you have the board. Flash the lights, whatever, now the performance is continuing.
Okay, I just want to let you know that as far as resource sharing goes, we have recently announced our. Can you speak up? Um, yes, I wanted to let you know that we have released WorldCat, which is our new interlibrary loan system that has been shared with the public. It's a streamlined system of our current interlibrary loan process. So instead of submitting, like, a book title that the interlibrary loan team has to search for, and there's back and forth, patrons can now go to WorldCat, make an account, look for items themselves, and request it themselves. So it's very similar to like how we use our current card catalog, CoolCat. So it's just a more streamlined process, and that has been released, and I have heard really good things so far from patrons.
Yeah, we started, oh, go ahead. We started using it. We have yet to receive our books, but it was easy enough to put in those requests. Now, is this gonna be a replacement for Mobius?
No, it is not. It is simply an easier way to use interlibrary loan. I don't have any updates about Mobius or the OpenRS system at this time.
Is there a link to this on the library website?
Yes, there's a frequently asked questions page on our website about how to use WorldCat.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so the second item we have under, oh, Mary.
I have a question. Sorry. So we use the library a lot, and having Mobius down since, what is it, April of 2024 has been extremely disruptive, especially since we homeschool. You know, we augment our own library at home by borrowing books from the, materials from the library. Have you guys, I guess, is there a big cost differential between using WorldCat and Mobius? And I ask this because WorldCat has a huge library to choose from. I was surprised. We were able to find everything we wanted, and we, my kids go down rabbit holes. And we were able to find the books that are, you know, that would go down these rabbit holes into. Is this something that has been explored, you know, as maybe a potential substitute for Mobius? You know, would there be a huge cost differential? Is that something that's been considered?
I'm not sure. I can look into it and let you guys know.
Because are there any updates on Mobius? When is that gonna go live?
I'm not sure. Last thing I heard was last month, and they were starting testing. So, but we have not, haven't had any updates on our end. But I can look into it.
Would you be comfortable making that a motion so that Dana has clear direction on specifically what she should be researching?
Sure. Thank you. Well, I'm for, I'd like to make a motion for us to get a more clear, a clear timeline for when we can expect Mobius to go back online.
Would you like me to email that to you?
Yeah, that would be great. And since it's a motion, it would be emailed to the entire board, correct?
Yes.
We have a second on a motion requesting for a timeline of the Mobius to be online via email update to the board.
One second.
Any discussion on the motion? Jan has already thought of platform. Thank you. All right, hearing none, I will move us to a roll call vote on the motion of a clear timeline that Dana will help us research a clear timeline for the Mobius to be online and send an update email to the board. Roll call vote, trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Cor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, so the next item that we have under old business is bylaw revisions. For those that are unaware, our bylaw changes require two readings. That's what you'll say listed as second reading tonight. I believe December was the first reading, and there are final revisions, counting as the first. And Tori is helping us scroll to that on the screen. So John, you now have the floor on this topic.
Okay, I will read the what is the final version, proposed new version. Article 8, scope of authority. The district library board trustees is defined by state statute, it's 182, and its bylaws. The board of trustees has the following powers and responsibilities. Number one, policy setting. The board establishes library policies, including rules for the operation and its use of library facilities and services in coordination with the executive director. Budget approval. The board approves the library budget and oversees financial management, ensuring responsible use of public funds. Personnel management. The board hires, regularly evaluates, and may terminate the library executive director. The executive director typically manages the day-to-day operations and staff. Long-term planning. The board is involved in strategic planning to ensure the library meets the community needs and adapts to its changes. Facilities. The board can acquire, maintain, and improve library grounds and buildings, including issuing bonds for these purposes. And that's the entire article eight.
I would hear a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt the revised article eight.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion?
I don't see the need to make these changes. I believe everything is stated in the original version, and that the scope of authority of the board was expressly stated in the previous version.
Other discussion? All right, hearing none, we will move to a vote on accepting the, or adopting the revised versions, as this is its second read. So I'll go to roll call vote. Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Nay.
Trustee Hernandez de Cor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, John. All right, the next item. Tori, will you have a moment, please? Thank you. The next item on the agenda for old business. I didn't see this was old business, because I think it's technically new business.
You guys had a whole meeting about it, so it's kind of the second.
Sounds good. We'll discuss it as old business. As written on the agenda, it's the legal representation of the library district in ongoing litigation. So I had shared with the board that we received a response to our RFQ back from Mr. Wenders of the Reynolds and Gold Law Firm, saying that they would not be able to assist us at this time. As a result, I requested that this item be added back to tonight's agenda, and will call for a motion to seek representation of the CCL district in ongoing litigation.
Okay, and Mr. Wenders was the second person to say they would not take on this case. The current, the current library lawyer, Mr. Petrowski, also said he would not get involved in this matter. So Mr. Wenders was the second lawyer to decline involvement in this matter.
Yeah, the update is that we asked Mr. Wenders based on the RFQ. He was the only attorney. We asked for RFQ.
And you also told us in our board emails that Mr. Petrowski recused himself from dealing with this matter also.
Yes.
So two lawyers have refused themselves.
It's, I don't know that it's legally recusing oneself as much as declining an RFQ.
There you go. Thank you. To me, there must be independent legal representation for the library. Since four of the trustees are involved, the library is its own entity. And to get this clarified, we really need legal representation per the motions in the closed meeting.
So the motions in the meeting were to put out an RFQ to Mr. Wenders, and Mr. Wenders has declined those services. So I would hear a motion tonight to potentially seek legal representation for the library district in ongoing litigation.
I would move that we do an RFP to seek counsel, to basically litigation counsel. I would move that we do an RFP to seek counsel, to basically litigation counsel in the litigation counsel for the library district in the ongoing litigation and seek that for whoever it is, seek his or her advice on how to proceed.
So is there a second?
Could you repeat that?
Okay, sorry.
Or Tori or Echo or whoever wrote it down?
I think I have it. Do you have it written, Diana?
No, I didn't write it. I just came up with it.
I have Diana moves to to put out an RFP for litigation counsel and seek advice for the ongoing litigation and seek advice for how to proceed.
Yeah, I would actually just say do an RFP for litigation counsel for the board for the district rather in the ongoing litigation.
Okay.
And then I think the rest of it, seeking that person's advice, kind of follows.
Sure.
If we hire, we're going to seek that person's advice.
Okay, so at the motion as it stands, RFP to seek litigation counsel for the district. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Trustee Garrity seconds. Discussion on the motion. Further discussion on the motion. All right, hearing none, we will move to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carl.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, first item of new business.
Hey, I'm sorry. Did you want us to use the previous RFQ that you already approved? And are you wanting us to handle that?
Good thoughts. Previously, we had an RFQ, which is not the same as an RFP. So do you want to? Just because since you made the motion.
Just to clarify the difference. With an RFP, you're asking for the firm to talk about, you know, referrals, common cases that they've, you know, it's a much larger presentation to the contracting body. So an RFQ is is kind of quick, and they're just quoting it. If you think, Diana, we need an RFP, then let's do an RFP. It costs more money to generate the responses, almost.
Okay. No, I think probably an RFQ would be fine. It's just somebody we just need basically we just need to hire a litigation counsel.
We had a discussion a moment ago.
So you could pretty much use the same template. Well, we use the same template. We just need a list of attorneys that we can send it out to.
Yeah. And I can, you know, I I have some ideas on on that. You know, I haven't I haven't talked to anybody, so I don't know who's going to be interested. But, you know, I know who's who among the local legal community is is capable of handling the job.
So John, or Diana, would you be comfortable making a motion to amend our recently voted upon motion to use an RFQ that we previously drafted?
If everybody still agrees, I can just change it to Q. If I mean, unless that changes anybody's votes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Diana, since you are an individual member of the board, would you give that list of lawyers and their contact information to Dana as interim director and let her send out the request?
Yeah, but I think what we ought to do is probably, you know, advertise it in, you know, the with the Springfield Bar Association or the, you know, basically the places where we where we advertised or where we advertised it previously, the RFP for that got us Mr. Petrowski.
Dana, I have those. So if we're comfortable that we get potential list of attorneys as well as advertising, we have to research, have to research that.
That'd be great to reuse that information. That sounds great.
You can get that to me. I can send it.
Okay.
Thank you all. Anything else that we need on our RFQ? We got it. Okay, I will eagerly now move to new business. All right, so first item of new business that is in your packet, trustee Hernandez de Carl. So we're very excited to have you here. For those who are unaware. For those who may not be aware, trustee Hernandez de Carl represents the Nixa area of Christian County. So she's taking over the remainder term from Ms. Allison Tuckness, but that unexpired term through June 30th of 2026. For those unfamiliar with the Nixa area, that is the Union Chapel, Northview, Rosedale, and Garden Grove Township. So welcome, trustee. And if you like saying anything, you're welcome to.
I just am grateful for the opportunity to serve the interests of the residents of Nixa.
Great, thank you. All right, next item on our new business is the 2025 pay scale revision of executive directors, starting pay range and minimum experience and education requirements. I do apologize if you don't recall who put this on there, or if it was a group's ask to Ms. Miller to help us revise this.
We put it on there at your request after we adjusted the pay scale for the executive director's job description.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the revisions? They are in the packet and on this one.
I I still did not agree with not requiring a master's in library science, and I still would not have increased it to $43, except it between 38 and 42.
All right, so the next item of new business on the agenda.
You have to you have to approve it because you have to vote to approve the revised because you you approved the original one back in November.
Is this legally binding document?
Every year when you pass the budget, you pass the pay scale. You guys have to approve the pay scale requirements.
It's a part of our budget.
It's a part of your budget packet every year. And it's actually a separate vote. So you vote yes or no, you know, on the final budget, and you vote yes or no on the pay scale.
I believe we already voted on the dollar increase, but if it if it makes it official, I'd make a motion that we approve the dollar pay range increase for the executive director.
So you did vote on that. What you didn't vote on is revising the pay scale to reflect the new requirements. So you voted on changing it, but not on changing the pay scale. So those two things are in conflict. This is the pay scale for the whole district.
We need to move to to approve the pay scale as amended.
Yes, it's not different than what you already wanted.
Okay, isn't that an and/or with the minimum experience and education requirements, since that is in one lump sentence?
I don't think we're debating the changes. I believe we voted on the changes. I think now we are approving the pay scale as revised, if I'm understanding.
Yeah, so you you approved these changes to post the job, but then you have to change the pay scale, because that's approved annually for the whole district. So approving the requirement, you know, downgrading the requirements or whatever for that position, then you have to approve it on this too.
And you've already made the changes on the pay scale, correct? It looks like you did.
Yeah, we I literally just took the verbatim stuff that you wanted in the job description and put it in these two categories instead of what was there before, and changed the starting pay range from 38 to 43.
So the only thing that changed was executive director, right?
Correct, just that one level.
All right, so John, you had originally started a motion. Are you comfortable with a motion to approve the pay scale as amended?
Yep, I move that we accept it.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, discussion on the motion.
Who was that second? I'm sorry.
I think we've already discussed. Thank you all. We will move to roll call vote. Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Nay.
Trustee Hernandez de Carl.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next item under new business was removal of the library district from the lawsuit.
I think we probably ought to table that until we get our new counsel hired and seek that person's advice.
Do we need a motion to table an item off the standing agenda? We would just.
Probably.
Probably, perfect.
I move that we table the removal of the library district item.
Thank you.
Until we get an attorney.
Second. Thank you. All right, discussion on the motion to move to table this agenda item until counsel is retained. No discussion. I will move us to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carl.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. All right, the next item on our new business is fees from John Spurlock in defense of the lawsuit for Janice Hagan. John, I believe you added this to the agenda. You now have the floor.
Yes, to make it official, we we the majority of the board need legal defense. So I make a motion that we pay John Spurlock for the legal defense. As we receive those in voice, I make a motion that we pay them.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second. Okay, guys. This is a personal issue between four of us. It has nothing to do with the library. To use library funds would be considered embezzlement and breaking the law. And you can't, the library can pay for its own counsel, but the individuals have to pay for their individual counsel. They were not addressed as board members. They were addressed as individuals. So I am very concerned that you would be accused of embezzlement of library funds and breaking the law by assuming the library covered your expenses.
I don't think you know what embezzlement is, Diana.
I don't think that's embezzlement. And I would point out that we were sued in our official capacity.
Yes.
Rather than as as I was sued as Diana Brazil board member as opposed to Diana Brazil offending individual.
We just so you know, we can't break sunshine law as individuals. We can only do it in the capacity of as a board member. So.
I think it would be wise to to inform that county commissioners who we report to as a board or who advised us to immediately obtain counsel. So I think we as a board are following our leadership, which is the county commissioners who appoint us, and that was commissioners' advice to obtain counsel in this lawsuit.
I just don't understand why you can request monies when the library was one of the entities in the complaint that you broke sunshine laws. So how can you request money from the entity that is labeled as one of the accusers of of that incursion? I I just don't see how I think if anything, I would advise that you get counsel on that issue, because I was very concerned that it will be a legal problem. I'm trying to say this very kindly. I'm I'm I don't want you to get in legal trouble.
And I don't want you to get in legal trouble either, Janice.
Yes.
You and Allison contracted Harry.
No, I.
Against his contractual agreement. You did that.
I individually talked to Harry after he resigned as the representative for the library.
We are not having a public discussion. Thank you all.
So anyway, the motion's on the floor. I call the question.
All right, call the question. We will move to a vote on the motion on the floor.
Before you before you vote, I I would give my recommendation that you seek legal counsel about this issue.
We have, thank you.
But that we didn't, the library did not.
No, Dana, you're not on the board.
I am not on the board.
You haven't been called on. You have not been recognized, Dana.
I recognize her, and how dare you be that rude?
You're not the chair.
We are.
You are not the chair either, John.
No, it's a point of order.
We are following Robert's Rules of Order. Dana, I appreciate your commentary. I think we are moving to a vote on this motion to pay for legal defense from Mr. Spurlock for this active litigation. So there was a motion by trustee Garrity, seconded by trustee Brazil. We will move to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Nay.
Trustee Hernandez de Carl.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is removal of memberships in ALA and MLA as appropriate. John, you requested this item. You now have the motion.
Thank you so much. Thanks, John. Thank you. Did you have that on hand and done that you just? Or John?
I sent them.
Okay, oh, that's the one you have. Okay, great, I'll get it later.
And the link has all the money.
I'll get it.
Okay, so I move that we withdraw the Christian County Library District from membership in the American Library Association and the Missouri Library Association, both of which have our private trade organizations. And I would note that individuals employed by the library may join these organizations at their own cost. This motion does not affect the executive director's attendance or participation in state library meetings or statute. Additionally, library resources and training are available from other organizations, online or often free, and even ALA, the resources are free. So I don't believe there's an impact, but that's my motion to withdraw.
And the motion is just that first sentence, right? The rest is just a note.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, say again.
The motion itself is just that first sentence, right? The rest is just a note. Okay, great, thank you for writing that down for us. Yeah, that was.
Is there a second to the motion?
I've got a question before. What do Dana, I don't know if you have this information off the top of your head, but I would like to know, what does it cost the library to be a member in ALA and MLA?
The library is not institutional members of ALA or MLA.
Are there individuals employed by the library who are members whose memberships are paid for by the library?
We will occasionally pay for their memberships if the fee will allow for a discount to attend like a conference, but we do not have like, you know, regular a membership for that. We I'm not really sure about active memberships right now, but I can I can get that back to you.
I would like to I would like to know that, because I think I to be better informed about this, I'd like that information.
For for individual memberships?
Yeah, basically where I'm going is I just would like to know what the library is paying, how much the library is, how much if any, the library is paying toward these organizations.
To clarify, I think that would be a future hypothetical, because you have to look back in 2024 and say, how many did we pay in 2024?
Okay, yeah, that's.
Or looking forward to 2025, we may not have paid any yet, because we may not have yet attended a conference.
I guess what I'd like, yeah, that's that's a good point. Yeah, could you just get the figures on what we paid those organizations in 2020? In, I'd say 2023 and 2024, just to have a couple of years to get an idea of what it costs us.
Okay. Echo, can I have a motion on that?
Yeah, so we actually have a current motion on the floor, so we can continue discussion on the current motion, and then we can certainly make a motion to ensure we got clarity there. Diana, happy to.
And Echo, I'm sorry to interrupt. John motioned, who seconded, was there a second?
We did not. We had a clarifying question on whether Diana.
Gotcha.
Comfortably making a second. We'll get that. So do we have a second on Mr. Garrity's motion for moving to withdraw the Christian County Library District as written? There is a discussion until we have a motion on the floor. So.
So my hearing what she said, we are not as a library members of the ALA or the Missouri Library Association, so we can't move to withdraw membership that we don't have.
Do we need to change the wording now?
Yeah. Are we so we have a second. I think the the dollars are really not the major concern, and I think some of the audiences said said this as well. The the issue is, I think the direction of the Christian County Library is not the direction of ALA and MLA. That's that's not our direction.
I understand that. I I really do appreciate that and understand it. But from what she said, we can't withdraw a membership from something we don't have a membership in.
So we have no memberships?
I don't know what current active memberships we have, but I know that as a as like institutional membership, like the Christian County Library being a member of ALA, being a member of MLA, we do not have that. Now, again, I think we have in the past paid for, like, if I were to go to ALA, we would pay for a membership to ALA, because it would be cheaper to pay the fee to attend a conference that way. So there's individual memberships that we can do, but there's non-institutional membership.
John, would you be comfortable with a friendly amendment to the wording of your motion of membership or association?
I am. I would accept that. Membership or association?
Why?
I think John just explained some of that. I think John just explained some of that.
And I think too, you know, when I moved here, I, I noticed that there's, there's a bit of a bias in the, some of the materials that are available to the children. I feel like there is a big push to push certain ideologies. The critical race theory is one of them. And I'll give you an example. Right now, it's Black History Month, and I walk into the library here and I see a table, and I see books by Ibram X. Kendi, books that push anti-racist themes, which are harmful. You know, I fought very hard to get the library to buy one book on Clarence Thomas, a children's book on Clarence Thomas. I requested that book over six times. Why? You have so many books by Ibram X. Kendi. You have The Project 1619. You have a lot of books that push dangerous themes that are very divisive to this community, that I don't think reflect the interests of the people in this community. I am, I'm not white. I don't feel oppressed in this country, but those are the narratives that are, that are pushed here. And I think that is something that is very problematic. And when I, you know, did a deep dive a couple of years ago on what the American Library Association was doing, and, you know, like all professional organizations, they have materials and resources for their membership, and those materials and resources have a bias to them. It's an anti-white bias. It's a bias that promotes gender ideologies. And it's not one that is neutral. It, it denigrates the greatness of Western civilization. I have a difficult time finding classics for my children in the library systems. You know, we talk about books that have been purged. Try finding books by Robert Louis Stevenson here, Rudyard Kipling. It's hard, it's really hard. And this is a library for everyone. If you, if the library were to take time and to reach out to the homeschool communities, because there's, there's a very large homeschool community here. If we look at the statistics, in Missouri, one in 16 children is homeschooled. It's larger here. And we don't have materials for homeschool people, uh, communities. This is why I am, I find it unacceptable that Mobius has been down for this long because that is how I would get some books for my kids. I'm very fortunate, I can book, I can buy any book I want for my children. But not everyone is in that same boat. And so the ideologies, the, the spearheads of the American Library Association, you have Emily Drobinski, you have Cindy Holt, and the next person up, Sam Helman. You know, these people have, these leaders have biases. And I don't think that the biases that they push reflect the values of this community. And so I really agree with the move that, that John wants to make. And something else that I think is an indirect byproduct of what's happening with the American Library Association is they are creating a climate of fear among library staff. They keep up putting out handbooks that talk about how to fight the book bans, how to fight these bigots. No, we're not bigots. We're asking for guardrails, for there to be some sort of compromise so that everyone feels welcome in the library. Because I'll tell you what, I don't feel welcome in the library. My kids don't roam freely in this library. They can't. Because there's a lot of material there that is, that they're just not old enough to be able to access.
I guess my concern would be, I grew up on the East Coast with, you know, just huge mass libraries where many opinions and theories, diverse artists, things were available. I, my family and I made choices as to what was comfortable for our reading skills, but I would be concerned with limiting access to even divisive theories. I would promote to have more, you know, to keep a balance. I would, I would choose to keep a balance, to have more available. We, we did have a horrible time with slavery. And to erase that that existed or that caused anger or hurt or good lessons learned, I would be afraid that that would be confining what people are exposed to.
And, and that's a typical argument that I think the American Library Association makes to their membership and to board members that they reach to through materials that they put out. Because I never said that, and I don't think that people, listen.
I've never read anything from the Missouri Library Association or the ALA. I, I don't, I don't read them, I don't go online, I don't pursue it. I feel I need to be impartial. That's just my personal opinion from my experience growing up in a multiracial area with diverse ethnicities, with going through the riots in Baltimore in 1965 and having my mother shunned and escorted out with security because she was very Germanic looking and I was very dark, complaining in the sun, and I had short, dark curly hair. And she was harmed, I was harmed. And I don't think having the information out there is a wrong thing. I think we need to have more options, not less options.
And, and this isn't about like limiting options. I'm just letting you know that with the power that the American Library Association wields over publishing companies and the sphere of influence that they have, they actually create the bias. They are limiting the information because they, they don't want to accept the greatness of Western civilization. If you look at all the new material that is being promoted by the American Library Association, if you look at the reading lists that they put out, the, the materials that they are promoting have a bias. It's an anti-white bias. Listen, my family is multiracial. You look at my extended family, I have people that are very white and people that are very black in my family. Of course, we exist in a multiracial society. I, I live here in Christian County, I'm a ethnic minority. I, I don't, it doesn't bother me because everyone here treats me with respect. And so when we bring in content that is, that, that, that doesn't, you know, reflect the entire history of our country, that's where it's dangerous. Because they're getting rid of books that were published during the golden era of literature, the 50s and the 60s. I requested many years ago that the library buy a book by Ingrid and Edgar Deler called Pocahontas. Beautiful, it's a beautiful book, I'm Pocahontas. The story is great, the language is beautiful, the illustrations are gorgeous. And they refused. Why is it that when I request books that promote people of color as being strong and not victims, that they get rejected?
Amen.
That is, that is. Because I'm not a victim. People of color in this country are not victims. And you have an organization that pushes that mindset. And what I do not appreciate is the climate of fear that it is creating. Because this board is very supportive of library staff. We want nothing much more, we don't want anything else other than to have the crown jewels of all libraries in all of the state of New Jersey. And it's about time that divisive rhetoric, all these ad hominem attacks that are levied at board members who have opinions, stop. And that work together.
Do you realize I have been.
Oh, you are, and you have been.
I have been attacked quite a lot also.
Yes.
I, I was, I was kind of hurt that prayers were not said to me, for me earlier because I have been a victim or a target at times also. And I do appreciate how difficult your position is and the goals you are trying to do. But I, I just, I don't know enough about the details about the ALA because I haven't looked in and tried to. So at this point, I respectfully would agree to disagree, but I really appreciate you sharing that information with me.
Yeah, and if you ever want to have a sit-down, I know you mentioned at one point that you're a kindergarten teacher. You know, we can talk about kids' books, what they have, what's missing, and what's needed. You know, because our kids deserve to have a beautiful library where they can freely roam the aisles and come home with bags full of books every time they visit the library.
Yes.
That's a good question.
Call a question.
Can you clarify the, because I don't quite understand how this changed. So from membership or association?
From membership or association with.
So for membership in?
Membership in or association with the American Library Association and Missouri Library Association. Was it association with?
Yeah.
I think we'll have to define that better when we get to.
The next, it's on the agenda.
The next subcommittee.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So with that revision, trustee Hernandez DeCaro, do you still second the motion as revised?
I do.
All right, we have called a question, so I'm going to move us to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Okay, I just have a question. So we're voting actually to remove the affiliation now, right?
Yes, that is the motion.
Not until after we get our questions answered.
Yes, that is the current motion, that's the thing.
Okay. I would really like to have more information before I vote on this.
Are you welcome to abstain or? I think I'm going to abstain. Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Respectfully, nay.
Trustee Hernandez DeCaro?
Aye.
So with two votes in favor, one abstention, one nay, motion carries.
When there's an abstention, you have to state a reason? And so the reason is because you wanted more information first?
Yeah.
Can we get that information added for the next agenda?
Yes, so we talked about making a motion now that we've gotten that one finished. Trustee Brazil is going to make a motion to clarify to Dana what information is required.
Yeah, okay, I want to make a motion to seek, I guess, to make a motion to request from Dana how much in 2023 and 2024 was spent by the library on memberships or memberships and programs from the MLA and the ALA?
By programs, you mean like?
Like conferences or.
Conferences.
Yeah.
Basically.
Let me clarify, how much was spent by the library on the ALA? Oh, did you go?
We had this prior meeting that we had discussed it.
Oh, sorry, I didn't answer up, I just wanted to see.
I think we had, was it on December?
December, yeah, because I printed.
No, you're okay.
Individual memberships.
There's been a lot of meetings since then.
Okay. No, I had forgotten about that.
No, you're fine.
Okay. I think that was one that. Yeah, actually, that kind of answered my question.
Would you change your vote?
Let me think about that for a minute.
No question.
A moment of internal deliberation.
I think it was only for last year, but 2024, I didn't know. I just kind of want to know what was spent.
I know we were going to reduce those memberships, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I remembered, I was like, wait, I think, there's just so many papers.
Yeah, for their boards.
To get my orientation.
Okay, yeah, I will change my vote.
At a time.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I was throwing my motion for more information. That basically answered my question.
All right, so with three votes in favor, one vote against, motion still carries. All right, next item on the new business is budget realignment. I believe this and the next, Mary, were yours.
Yes. During a meeting in January, an employee mentioned that there was 700,000 plus bond repayments.
Which January, we didn't have a.
During one of our special session meetings when we were discussing salary. And I thought it might be helpful for Mary to come in and just give us an overview of where the library stands financially and just give us a little bit more information about bond repayments so that the public has clarity. Because during my orientation, I had a chance to have a great conversation with Mary regarding the library finances. And I thought it would be worth her coming here and just sharing it with the public because there's a lot of concern over, you know, the gap. Or, because I think during the meeting, it was mentioned that we hadn't saved any money for the $700,000 bond payment, which was quite a shocker to everybody. But I think it was just, she'll explain, I think it was a matter of misspeaking.
Real quick, I think you skipped over the budget realignment, which actually John put on the agenda last meeting about the salary. Remember, he asked, he asked to add the term budget realignment because you were raising the salary slightly.
All right, and in the interest of time, I would table that. I think the budget subcommittee will address those issues, so.
My apologies, I thought those two were really.
They are the same.
Okay, so are you making a motion to table?
The budget realignment, I don't know, the bond repayment was.
To table or to get rid of it?
I'd say we get rid of it, budget realignment. We'll deal with that in the budget subcommittee.
Okay, so John has made a motion to remove from tonight's agenda the budget realignment. Is there a second to that motion?
There's a second.
Perfect, thank you. And second, is there a discussion on removing this item from tonight's discussion?
No.
If none, I will move us to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez DeCaro?
Aye.
And Mary, was you again that seconded?
Yes.
Second louder. I just have a, me too, so.
Sorry, Mary, you gave us a great introduction to the next topic, thank you. Bond repayment is the next item of new business.
Okay, so, yes, I'm sorry, I, we gathered and I got to give you that email about the bond repayment and everything, and we provide you with the amortization schedule of the three bonds. These amortization schedules are for three bonds. Technically, there are two bonds and one lease purchase. So the last thing is the, what name is it really? The schedule of rental payments. So we colloquially call that a bond because it's something we're paying back, right? Generally, we have raised, we have payments we have to make every single year. So these are the contracted payments plans for each of the bonds that when we took on the bonds, they were approved by the Board of Trustees at that time with, with their financial counsel. We are, we continue to be on track with our bond repayment plans. And yes, we do also have contingency funds that we have in CDs at the moment. So those are savings that we have. I'm not sure, sorry, Janice.
No, no, you, are you finished? Okay, I rewatched that meeting. I, I feel it, the challenge was just that we couldn't alter any of what we have approved every month and been exposed to and in December approved the annual budget as a board, that we cannot take money from those, from certain areas, such as the bond repayment and such. Because that has been set up with the bank, that has been set up with the library, that, that's set in stone. So adjustments in the budget could come from many different areas, but there are a few things that are intractable, you, you just can't change. And, you know, going through all the last couple of years of the bond payments and the schedules and the, we're totally on track, we're totally fine. We've all approved this. The bonds and the repayment for the bond, and that money is sound. It was concern about taking funds from different place. My, in my interpretation, the concern was about taking funds from different areas to be used in different ways, which is something we can certainly explore. It's just there are a few things that, that we cannot touch. We can amend the pay schedule for employees, we can, you know, amend some other things, but we, we just can't touch that because that's set in stone. We're committed to that legally.
I, I think where the shocker came was we have a, you know, looming $700,000 bond payment and no savings for, or nothing has been saved for it, I think.
There's, there's active savings.
Yes, and it, it shows here, because I, I don't know if the public can see, but there's.
Which one are you looking at?
Over $500,000.
Is that just the regular financial report? Yeah, I'll go back up.
In savings for the library. That's in CDs right now.
I don't believe, it's not listed under savings because as a government entity, we can't have saving accounts, right? So we have them in CDs, and that's our emergency fund that we can pull from. We also have money in reserves, which we are slowly growing, and that was part of the payment plan for these bonds, was to slowly grow our reserves. over the next couple of years because as, you know, I sent you the email about the payment plan, which includes like several different areas that we're pulling from to make the payments every single year. And at the end of those funds, we'll have enough in our reserves to make those payments if we continue on with our current plan. So that's what I found out. Yes.
Okay, and generally, like, is there a percentage that the library strives for to set aside from their yearly budget to put into savings every year?
I'm not sure I can find that out about percentages.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious, like, if that's a practice.
I don't know about that, but I can ask. I'm sure I can get, would you like me to ask?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be great, just.
That'd be nice to know.
Yeah, just to know. And how is that? Because I was surprised when I was talking to Mary about, you know, how the, all the money is spent every year, right? You get the budget, you get your funds and, you know, what comes in has to be allocated out. How would the savings be reflected on the budget? Would it be on the budget? Would you put that in a separate document?
It'd have to be in a CD or something. It couldn't be listed as savings. We're, you know, a nonprofit, a nonprofit entity. So we can't have savings, but we can put it in CDs or investments to grow. And as she said, some already is and it is allocated and directed towards, this is going towards, you know, continued support for the bond payments. That's my understanding.
Can I answer a question? I'm making sure.
I think so. I don't know if anyone else has any clarifying questions and.
I know I talked to Mary and we're happy to set up individual meetings with each of you. If you'd like to sit down with her and go over the financial plan again, happy to do that.
I would like to do that.
Sure, I think we can do that.
Okay.
If my schedule, they're commended, I would join your session and there would be only two of us, so it would not be a forum.
Smart.
I won't reveal.
My schedule might. Thank you. Any other?
Need to reach out to you as well?
Discussion, yeah, let's please try and, our calendars, we don't cancel online.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the bond repayment? Don't think we have any other motions. Thank you, DeCarlo, for helping us coordinate that and for Dana and Mary for pulling us this information. We appreciate it. All right, next item on our agenda under new business is formation of a policy and bylaw subcommittee. John, this was one of your items. You have the floor.
You're now going to share.
Okay, first I have to say, there is no committee, a policy and bylaw committee or a budget committee. So there can't be a subcommittee if we don't have a committee. And actually, these are just part of our job as Board of Trustees. So again, I'm.
Let me make the motion.
John, take the floor.
Down on semantics.
Okay, I move that we form a subcommittee to review and revise the policies and bylaws of the Christian County Library District. The subcommittee will consist of two board members, a chair and a secretary, to be nominated and voted upon immediately after this motion in the meeting. And the executive director or a delegate and will consult with the district lawyer as needed. The subcommittee will be tasked with reviewing the current policies and bylaws, identifying areas that require updates or revisions, and bringing proposed changes back to the full board for approval. And this is more of a logistics, but the meetings, the subcommittee will meet weekly or as needed to fulfill the responsibilities. The meetings will be open to all. The duration, the subcommittee will exist for 60 days or until the work is completed.
All right, so thank you for the handout. And again, I think for Tori's and my sake, the first paragraph is the motion that you're making and then you've already served us in a discussion. Did I hear you correctly?
I need a second.
No, I'm just making sure I clarified the motion is the first paragraph.
The motion is the first part.
I got that.
Thank you. Is there a second on John's motion, first paragraph of the handout?
Well, I have a question. Do we, or do we have the second?
We would, ideally, we would have a motion on the floor, seconded to then begin discussing, but if you need to clarify on the motion, we can clarify on the motion.
I do want to clarify.
Yeah.
Are you looking to continue to amend the Board of Trustees bylaws?
Bylaws and policies. The entire handbook. We've been, up to this point, we've been kind of doing it piecemeal and I think it just needs to get looked at in its entirety, especially since we're going to remove our association from ALA. The ALA is all through our policies, so we really, we have to.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
Can we delegate the bylaws to the attorney to write? You know, and just have a subcommittee focus on the policy guidebook?
We could, from, from what I understand about what attorneys do, if, if we have him write the whole thing, the price tag's going to be much higher. I think it's better to, for us to draft it and then straw man, let the attorney look at it to see if there's problematic areas. It's less work for Robert.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I would recommend. But, I mean, as much as Robert needs to get involved or doesn't, you know, I mean. But he's, he's going to be consulted. I don't think it's a lot of work for him, but.
That's what I was asking.
Clarification? Again, you can't have a subcommittee when we don't even have a committee and this is the job of the board. It is not a committee issue. This is our job.
Well, I was looking.
It's in our.
In our Missouri Public Library Trustee manual. And it says, there's a section here, it says many boards find their operations run much more smoothly by creating a structure of subcommittees consisting of several members.
See, semantically, I just can't get that. When you don't have a committee, how can you have a subcommittee? It's, again, I get hung up on the semantics.
But the state library, I said it's a comment to use.
That's cool. Thank you. No, second it.
As we go into, so we have a motion in the first paragraph by trustee Garrity, seconded by trustee Hernandez de Carl. My first clarification for discussion would be potentially, trustee Hagan, would you like to make a friendly amendment potentially about the name of said committee or subcommittee?
I won't argue with the, with the semantics as Mary pulled out of our manual and I had not found that. So thank you very much for having that committed to, to your heart. I appreciate that very much. I, I would just say my concern is that to, to me, this is the job of the board and I feel we should all be involved. So that's my only comment.
Other discussion on the motion? I can hear you.
Hi, John?
Yes.
May I?
Please.
So just as a reminder, any committee that you form or subcommittee that you form has to act under the same rules and regulations that you do. So we have to give notes to the public, there has to be an agenda, those kinds of things, just as a reminder to do that. And I'm not quite sure if there's any other rules about actually forming it, but that's a reminder for that.
I think.
If you'd like me to look more into that, I certainly can.
And I, I did think that according to state statutes, you know, we have to work all in accordance with the sunshine laws regarding committees. Whether, is Robert up to date on sunshine law? Terminology, background? So when he reviews it, that would, that would be a concern and that, yes, all would have to be, all the meetings would have to be public and open, everything would have to be documented. And we, you might, we might want to involve professionals. We might see if there's somebody in the public who has a background in sunshine laws, who could be part of the committee, both the budget subcommittee and the bylaw subcommittee, sorry, I'm combining the two. To help guide and streamline of the process as, as the committee goes through the work. That that might be the, the delegate would be someone with that, a strong history in that background who might volunteer to be part of the subcommittee to address these issues. One would be, for me on budget, I would assume, I don't know if you would want Mary, who has the background in, in budgeting or get an outsider again, who might volunteer. And in the policy and bylaw subcommittee, Tori, is that part of your specific job title? Or is there someone else on staff who has that?
We have some expertise in it, but we're not exactly like a professional expert in those things.
So getting a volunteer who has professional background would maybe be helpful to make it a streamlined and, and smooth process for the transition.
Or Robert can probably, if you, like your idea of just giving it to Robert after the fact would be.
Thank you.
So in the motion, we have executive director or delegate. I think we have the staff input covered. I think we have the legal aspects covered. I think we have the board representation covered.
Is there further discussion?
So is this, it says on this that you wrote chair and secretary, so you're naming those people now, so that would be Echo and Janice?
I think we have to pass the motion first, right?
The motion, actually, best practices does have the members in the motion, which you have here. I mean, that is the best practice for forming a committee.
I don't mean the chair of the Board of Trustees. I mean, the subcommittee will have its own chair.
So you're not saying the chair and the secretary of the Board of Trustees will be two members of the committee?
No, it'll be its own. It's, maybe it's confusing.
So there would be a committee chair.
There'd be a committee chair.
And a committee secretary.
Does that make sense?
To ensure that the person to Dana's compliance.
So in every committee, you've got to have a hierarchy inside the committee, someone that's facilitating the meetings, driving the progress. So that's, that's what I meant by that.
I see, I see.
That makes sense. That way we have the minutes for the sunshine compliance.
Right, the minutes and we won't have a quorum and we will have attorney counsel advising us.
So which two of you are going to be, it'll be different from each committee?
I think we need, we have to approve a motion first.
Further discussion on this motion as written and clarified. All right, hearing none, we will move to a roll call vote. All right. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Nay.
Trustee Hernandez de Carl?
Aye.
Motion carries. John, is there further discussion on the policy and bylaw subcommittee or are we ready to move to budget?
I think that to go with this, this new committee, subcommittee appointment, I would defer to Dana and to who would be on this committee. It's either you or someone you delegate to.
I don't have to.
You don't have to answer now. I'm just saying to be thinking about that.
Are you asking for the staff member to?
Right. I mean, they're going to be changing your operational policies, so if you don't have input, it's really going to, I think it'd be bad. Something to think about. In terms of the board members who sit on this committee, I would like to participate. I'd like to be on this committee, subcommittee. Does anyone else volunteer?
I would volunteer because I could probably help you with the drafting.
Excellent.
Do you want to be chair or secretary?
I don't care.
All right, I'll be chair.
Okay.
That means I'll do all the admin work.
All right, if you'd be so kind as to make that into a motion for Dana to please delegate her appointee and maybe a timeline to make sure she's successful as well as the board.
Yeah, I move that, that is kind of odd to nominate yourself, but I'll do. I'm going to nominate myself as the chair of the policy and bylaw subcommittee with trustee Brazil as the secretary and the staff member is TPD.
By what date maybe? I just don't know how soon you wanted to start so that Dana knows how long she has to appoint someone.
I'm sorry.
By what date would you like Dana to appoint someone so that the committee can be at the start?
I'd say within seven days.
So there's a time?
Yes. So trustee Garrity has made the motion for trustee Garrity to be the chair of the new subcommittee, Diana to be the secretary of the new subcommittee and Dana to please appoint herself or delegate to the subcommittee in the next seven days so that they might begin. Is there a second to that motion? Trustee Brazil? Second, a discussion on that motion.
All right, so these are weekly meetings. Are you guys going to be coordinating that schedule?
What I'll do, as the chair, I will email you and say we need a meeting on X date. I'll give you more than the 24 hours required. They are open meetings. There'll probably be Zoom calls or Google Meet.
That's up to you, but we need time to set it up.
I'll give you plenty of time.
Yeah.
Give it a week.
All right, so moving to roll call vote on this motion, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
I have to abstain since I voted nay on the, on the motion for the policy and bylaw subcommittees.
All right, and trustee Hernandez de Carl? All right, motion carries. Anything else, John, on the policy and bylaw subcommittee that we didn't get? We've got who it is, when it is.
I will find out through the logistics as we.
All right, the next item on new business is formation of a budget subcommittee. John, do you want to have the floor?
I'll continue this one.
All right, will you take this one?
You have to take others' names.
All right. So as the treasurer of the Board of Trustees, I, I'm feeling like I need to have a much more granular view of what's going on. I was, we approved, I approved the budget without really fully understanding the budget. That's a terrible place to be, as you probably understand that Mary coming on too. So to solve that, I move that the Christian County Library District establish a budget subcommittee with the following objectives, composition and authority. The budget subcommittee shall be responsible for reviewing, analyzing and making recommendations regarding the library's budget. The subcommittee shall provide a detailed analysis to help inform the decisions regarding the allocation of financial resources. The subcommittee shall consist of four members, including the chairperson, the secretary, the executive director and the director of finance and business operation, Mary Miller. Members shall be appointed by the Board of Trustees by nomination and vote, similar to what we did before. The subcommittee shall have authority to propose budget allocations and will report findings and recommendations back to the full Christian County Board of Trustees. The subcommittee is not authorized to approve the final budget, but its role will provide informed input and recommendations. And the meetings are the same as the other ones. Subcommittee will meet weekly or as needed to fulfill its responsibilities. The meetings will be open to all. The duration of the subcommittee will, shall exist for 60 days or till the work is completed, at which point its work will be reviewed by the full Christian County Library Board of Trustees. That's my motion.
There is the motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
The motion's only at the top.
Yeah, great, thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion on the motion. Questions on the motion?
I, I would again say that I think it's wonderful for the positions you've asked to be part of the committee. But I would think having an outside person with budgeting and financial experience who might volunteer for this position would be an additional help. We have been approving the budget. We have seen it monthly. We have approved the quarterly, the six month, nine month, the 12 month. I feel that if we had had questions, as we have at times, and brought them up, to just go through this piece by piece, I would question. up, um, to just go through this piece by piece, um, I would question, no offense, the, the two, the chairperson and the secretary, and potentially the executive directors or inter, uh, direct, executive directors, knowledge of terminology and interplay of the finances and how it all balances. So I would, I would, um, move to amend the motion to include, uh, someone from a banking system, um, who, or a finance system, who is, uh, who works in this capacity and could volunteer to add their input objectively.
So there is a friendly amendment, um, for a, um, banking or finance, sort of saying a volunteer?
Yeah, and a volunteer, an objective volunteer, um, to help review the information.
John, do you accept that friendly amendment to your motion?
I, I do not. I, I would say that, to, to make you feel better about this, I expect to reach out to Brian Keen, the branch manager for the bank that we use, and, and pull resources for reports from the bank. I will work with Dana Miller, I have a pretty long work history of managing finance, so I feel confident with Dana Miller's help, with Brian Keen's help, and, um, I think we can get through this. It's really more to understand and to see if there's areas to make improvements, it's not an audit.
To clarify.
I think audits are coming, but.
Yeah, so are you envisioning, like, because, because I was looking at, being new to the board, at the invoices, and I wonder if it's just a matter of having a couple meetings, because in my mind, I'm like, oh, this is, this is interesting, I don't know what's engaged learning is, and centerpoint large print, but if we were to have like buckets, maybe it's just a matter of using your existing, um, tools that you have to generate the tracks to just put additional labels and to start looking at, you know, the cost to check out per buck?
Exactly.
And just different metrics, so that you know.
I mean, I think, Echo, you had a transparency thing started, and this is just kind of a continuation of that.
Yeah, that would, that would be my exact ask of this, is not to sidetrack or derail your original intent, but to identify opportunities for transparency publicly that we could do, I mean, we've talked about the cost of sunshine requests, for instance, if we were more publicly transparent with a lot of our financial information, and certainly amongst ourselves, if we have questions, certainly the public's going to have questions, so I think that would be my ask, is can we take a lens through this process, not, you know, different than for public transparency, board transparency, I know that obviously at the end, the goal will be to bring it back to the board, the findings, which will be maybe a different deliverable, but thinking through it of how do we establish that in a more clear way, so that we're not having to ask questions over and over and continually go back to the old.
And I think it'll help with sunshine requests as well, because you just, you're pointing towards that.
But I also, um, I, I would, I would thoroughly like Brian Keen to be involved as the objective volunteer for all four members of the subcommittee, but not for them to be just the contact of one person on the subcommittee, I, I think all the subcommittee members should, um, have access to his knowledge and questions and information.
I don't think he could be biased if he profits off our $4 million.
He could be biased if questions were restricted and maybe did not reflect the questions of all the people in the subcommittee, is my concern.
Would the subcommittee be open to receiving questions from members of the board, is that maybe?
Let us, let us, I think the first step in any kind of committee is to do a complete assessment, data dump. Um, I, I guess we're getting into the mechanics of how the committee's going to operate, but our job is to, to get the information presented in a digestible way, because right now, we don't really have that, and then see where those questions stand.
Yeah, because, I mean, I learned that Mary Miller was a CPA, and so she's got the business know-how, she looks at these numbers every day, I think she is, her, her input will be very valuable, um, as we have this discussion, and though bringing an outside financial entity will be more valuable, she will be to the committee.
Yeah, that's an audit, I'm not looking for an audit, we're just trying to have a better understanding. Can I call the question?
Further discussion, uh, John, if you call the question, we will move to a vote. So the motion, um, forget maybe we didn't amend anything, right? I think from our previous motion, we just learned, when you say chairperson and secretary, you mean committee, chairperson and committee secretary, so that's clear, and to all, and that director of finances, Mary Miller. All right, so that motion on the table, uh, we have second, um, roll call vote, trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Nay.
Trustee Hernandez de Carle. Motion carries. So John, would you like to follow it with a second motion, like we did on the last, to put the right people in place?
Well, I'm obviously going to want to be on this committee, I don't care who chairs it, but I am the treasurer, so maybe I'm the right person to chair it. Can I ask for another board member to sit on the committee with me?
I'll sit with you.
Thank you. So I move that I sit as the head of, chair of that committee, and Mary would, um, be the secretary for that committee.
Wait, and?
We'll bring the report back to the board in full with recommendations.
And this one is with, with our interim executive director and director of finance, we don't need any further appointments?
So, I would ask Dana that you talk to Mary and let her know what we're trying to do here, um, so we're going to need some of her time, you know, about an hour a week. Are you back there?
I am here.
All right, you heard what we were saying, what we're trying to do? Okay, we're going to need.
I assume this is just to review last year's motions?
No, we want to look at the 2025 budget, we want to look at 2025.
In January?
I mean, if, we're going to, it's a rolling 12 months, so we can talk about it when we make, but, yeah.
All right, so no other appointments are needed, right? Director of finance and business operations, Mary, okay. All right, so John has made a motion for membership of the committee. Um, is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? All right, hearing none, uh, trustee Brazil. Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
I have to abstain on grounds, I voted nay on the first motion.
Trustee Hernandez de Carle.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, after that short marathon, thank you all for staying with us tonight, I will call this meeting adjourned.